Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this open session to order. Earlier, we had a couple workshops on our upcoming bond. And then, we went into closed session and discussed matters pertaining to students and employees. The board took no action during closed session. And now, we are here in open session. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask our Board Representative, Justin, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your head. Ready? Be ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Justin. Now, we start with the Board President's report. And it's always fun for me because I get to kind of talk about whatever is on my mind and whatever is good going on in the district and so forth. Thank you, Tina. I wrote an article recently for School News. And I'm going to highlight a little bit of what I said because I think it's apropos to some of the recognitions that we're giving tonight. And I likened teaching to be a little bit like the practice of medicine. And what I meant by that is you graduate medical school and go through a residency program. And you're probably at the highest level of academic knowledge that you have, all the textbook stuff and the didactic material for medical school and so forth. But you're lacking arguably some of the most important elements of being an effective physician. And that is experience and mentoring and wisdom that only comes with being seasoned in the practice of medicine. So I think teaching is a lot like that. And there are some things that we do in the district to ensure that that academic excellence is blended with innovation and experience. And one of the things we do with new teachers is we have a five-year professional development program. We're going to hear a little bit more about that later. And we try to inculcate in our teachers that are new to us, some of the best practices that we have in La Salle. And those include things like CGI, cognitively-guided instruction, Dr. Sandra Kaplan, Icons of Depth and Complexity, and other best practices. And that allows us to create, I think, some of the excellence that we have here in the district. In addition, being an excellent district is more than just outstanding teachers, and we're blessed to have some of the best. It's also that we're in a community that supports the hard work that we do. And part of that is the legislative body up in Sacramento and folks that represent us that fight us, fight for us every day up in Sacramento. And so now, I want to introduce one of those legislators that are here today that battles for us on a regular basis, and that's our State Senator, Janet Nguyen, that is going to give a very short presentation and some information to us. Thank you, Senator Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Or, yeah, good eve-- it's evening, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. I flew back 11:00 PM last night, so I really don't know my time right now. I just want to thank you for having me here and giving me the opportunity to be here. First, I want to thank the Honorable Members of the La Salle Unified School District for giving me the opportunity today to recognize and celebrate the contribution of an outstanding individual, Dr. Sherri Crop. Dr. Crop has established a career in education that spans more than four decades and has inspired generations of students to strive for academic excellence. Under her tenure with the Board's direction, Dr. Crop has maintained the La Salle Unified School District standing as a high-achieving educational institution. Given all that she has accomplished, it is no surprise to anyone in this room that the Association of California Administrator has selected Dr. Crop as their 2018 Superintendent of the Year. Dr. Crop, I want to commend you for the impact that you have had on our students. The work that you do every day makes a world of difference to the students of La Salle Unified School District, and it's life-changing. And I've had no doubt that you will continue to build on that legacy in the many years to come. As a token of my appreciation, I do want to-- I'm here to honor you, to present this proclamation to you in recognition of your decades of services and in celebration of your 2018 Superintendent of the Year Award. Again, Mr. President and your Honorable Board, thank you for allowing me the few minutes to honor our superintendent. And I have to say again, every time I see her, you know, for the parents here, the one thing I always remember at the annual meeting with the parents and the community members, we're number-- if we're number two, it's good, but we have to be number one. And so, I still strive that. Two is good, but we're not there at one. So, one is better. So, I always remind my son that. So, I'm-- he's only seven, but that's okay. No, I know, two is-- two is good. One is better. No, all kidding aside, thank you so much, and congratulations on your award.
Hard to surprise Sherri. Okay, next is our Student Board Member Report. Justin.
I'm esteemed members of the Board, Dr. Crop, Cabinet Members, and Community Members. My name is Justin Davidson, and I'll be presenting tonight's Board Report. First on tabs, this year, we're very fortunate to have three of our teams go to CIF, the first round. Boys' baseball played against Heart this last week, but unfortunately, they not make it through, but we're still proud of them for them having the ability to get into CIF. Girls' softball played in Pacifica today at home, so we'll have to find out how that game went. And then, Swim is also headed to CIF for swimming and diving. So, we're very, very happy for them, and we're all cheering them on. Next, we have senior activities, and I've just compiled a list of what all the seniors are looking forward to. And as I'm sure you can imagine, what most people are looking forward to is the very last one, which is graduation and grad night. So, we're all waiting for us to be in those fields and, you know, to throw those caps up, so. Next, Dance, this last week, just completed a very successful three-run for their show, The Blind Tiger, in which this year's theme was about the speakeasy in the 1930s. One thing I'd like to highlight for any of the art programs is on Wednesday, they always do a show, and for any art students who are in choir, drama, they get a free preview, which is very cool because, as you know, at La Salle, all the kids are very busy on the weekends, whether it be sports or different activities. So, on Wednesday, they're able to go into the show for free, which is a really great support system for all the arts. And finally, we're coming up with our second blood drive. We had one last semester, which we saved over 250 lives. And once we finish with this one, La Salle will be the highest one, or the highest donating high school in Orange County for a blood drive. So, it's very something, you know, this is something that our students put on and our students sign up for. So, the fact that our students are, you know, not only helping people in their own community, but going out throughout the whole county and helping everybody that needs their help is very great. So, that'll be coming up on June 6th. So, that's it for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Justin. Next, Dr. Crop, Superintendent's Report.
I have a question for Justin.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. I do donate blood regularly. I'm A-negative, so I get stalked. So, if I were wanting to go ahead and just donate through La Salle, I'm assuming, and for any other adult out there who has the flexibility on June 6th, should we contact the Activities Office to get an appointment, or?
Correct. Yes, you have an application that people can fill out.
Okay.
And as long as they pass the requirements, then--
I'm over 100 pounds, so I'm okay. And over 16. I've got that cleared.
And Justin, I will say that both of my sons did that when they were at La Salle. And I think that the treats that are given afterwards tend to be a really big draw for some reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board, and esteemed colleagues and friends, and students and students, and parents, families, et cetera. So, it is my pleasure to talk about a couple activities tonight. One of them is, are the recent PTA Honorary Service Awards that were given. So, this first slide, I'm not sure people know, but our PTA Council, they invite anyone at the site that's received a PTA Honorary Service Award to a breakfast. It's very nice. And they recognized Ryan Elliott, Alec Vida, Jacob Rippey, and Judy Kim. And that was their families up there with them. And then, this is a picture of Rachel Gooch. She's the one standing behind the younger kid. And Rachel Gooch has really been a volunteer for years, starting in elementary. And so, Mrs. Kaminsky spoke about her, Mr. Brigherman spoke about her, as did Mr. Mullenkamp. She's been involved in choir, the Butterfly Garden, and a host of other things, but really, hats off to her. And Jody Rabonis got a Continuing Service Award for the years of work she's done as well. And mostly, a lot of, not mostly, but she does a lot of legislative action work as well. And then, we also had one of our very own here, Annie Allen, received the Golden Oak Award. Let's give it up for Annie. And so, that's the PTA highest award. And then, Chris Vlasic, Outstanding Administrator Award, is here for Chris. And then, we also had a STEAM showcase. And so, I remember a few years ago when LEAF took this on, we had a handful of kids at each school that had projects for the science fair. And now, the gym was packed. It just exploded. Lots of teachers were there, administrators, parents, families, but it was phenomenal. And Diana Hill was there, too, so I got that picture there. But it really was amazing and just a really a testament to the entire community and all the stakeholders. Because for our kids, for some, this is their performance. You know, this is what they love, and they come, and they get to do their experiment. And it was really a show of our families, our teachers, our staff, and our students. And I'm going to give a little shout-out to Beth Ellis at Rossmore. She actually 3D-printed medals for each of her kids. That was pretty impressive. Way to go, Beth. And there's some more pictures that show some of the kids doing their experiments. And you can see some more. It's really cool to see the older kids and the younger one, and true to form. In fact, that's a little-- well, I'll go on. I did get a couple business cards from high school students, again, who told me I could go to them for business. So, I was really happy about that. And that's the LEAF Board, some of the LEAF members that really did a lot of work to make this happen. So, the President is Kevin on the left, and the Queen is in the center, Wendy. But there were a lot of people, and the Executive Director is Carrie. So, thank you. My pleasure. It was a fun weekend.
All right. Next on the agenda was a recognition of Alec Vida, but unfortunately, he was unable to attend. So, now, we're going to move on to something super fun that I'm really excited about. So, we have a Hero of the Heart Award tonight. You know, Harry Truman, President Truman once said, "You can accomplish anything in life, provided you don't mind who gets credit." This Hero of the Heart Award is that person, the person that accomplishes a lot, but never wants to take credit. As a matter of fact, purposely doesn't want to take credit. And when given the opportunity to take credit, they would prefer not to. This is a really special person for the La Salle Meadows Hero of the Heart Award. This person has been involved deeply in our schools, in our community, became a LEAF Board Member, Vice President of the Baseball Boosters, was a king, was a king, was the king winner a couple years ago. And I love surprises. Would Brian Leibel, please, come up here? So, I'm going to let Dr. Crop say a few words, and then, we want to introduce his family that's here tonight as well.
So, that's so awesome. So, every year, we get to do this, and it really is my privilege to honor. He is an amazing parent. And when I think about Brian, I think about someone who leads with heart. He's generous. He's an excellent speaker. I recently heard him. He has a hilarious sense of humor. And he gets really involved about having his kids learn to give back, too. And I think that was the most heartwarming thing, is just how you want to give service. You believe in community service. You go out of your way to help those in need, whether it's offering your emotional support, providing needed items, raising money for a family or a program. Brian is there. He opens up his home to support our students, most recently for baseball and for LEAF. He is extremely proud of his children. I love hearing about that. I see him and his wife at baseball games. I see them the few times I go. I'm sure they're there all the time. He recently joined the Operation Steering Committee Group, and he's really helping us with moving forward with, if we move forward on any kind of a bond. He is a great natural leader, and we know. So, first, Brian, congratulations. But before he speaks, I also want to just give a round of applause. So, where's Christine? Christine, come on up. Right now, come on. So, she is like a force behind him, too. So, I remember when he got talked into literally running for King of Hearts, because it's not like you wake up one day and dream of this, right? Like, this is something I want to go do this year. And so, he agreed to do it. And I remember, you know, Christine says, "Well, if I'm going to do it," can I say this story? "Then, we're going to raise $50,000." And he was like, "What?" And she goes, "Otherwise, I'm not doing it." And I think they came in at $68,000 or something. And so, it really does take a team. And yes, the award, we're recognizing Brian. He's on the LEAF Board. He donated a ton for baseball batting cages, ton to kids and families. But Christine, we appreciate you, too. We know you're a big force behind him. So, all Brian's family, come on up. And then, he'll talk and introduce you. Come on up.
Well, obviously, I don't have anything prepared because I wasn't expecting this. My wife had me cancel a dinner tonight, said, "Oh, no, you have to come, and we're going to celebrate Annie Allen tonight." So, I'm a little taken back, so I apologize. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody here, everybody, my family, of course, another big surprise, my wife for all her support, Dr. Crop, the Board, Dr. Barki, everything that this school, this district has given my children and our life here in Rossmore and in La Salle. And I'd like to thank all of you guys for participating, and all the parents and the students that come in and day in and day out, and do the best that they possibly can to make our district one of the best in the country. Thank you.
So, Brian's certificate says, "La Salle Meadows Unified District proudly presents the Hero of the Heart Award for extraordinary dedication and exceptional service to the students of the La Salle Meadows Unified School District, May 22nd, 2018."
This one's really not a surprise, but she's next. So, before I start talking about her, this is a highlight of the whole year for us. So, Mrs. Ruth Friedman Finch, come on up. So, I know she's going to cry through the whole thing, but it's okay. So, it gives me great pleasure to announce that Mrs. Ruth Friedman Finch has been selected as our 2018 La Salle Meadows Unified School District Teacher of the Year. She is an exceptional teacher and colleague, and goes above and beyond to improve the lives of children. Her passion for young people inspires her excellent work and dedication to the teaching profession. We have many excellent teachers, and we are thrilled that Ruth Friedman Finch will represent La Salle Meadows Unified as our Teacher of the Year this year. She is truly a champion for all kids. Ruth was hired to teach at Weaver in 2000 and has been with us ever since. She has been a Coatsen Fellow, a Master Teacher, a BHTSA Mentor, and a constant learner and collaborator. And when I asked Andre, "What do you think about her?" And she listed a ton, but a line I loved was, "Her quest for knowledge is infinite." She has presented professional development for La Salle Connects, Coatsen, and numerous districts throughout California. She opens her room to anyone who wants to come in and said, "The people I teach with are simply amazing. Each of them helped me to elevate my own practices." She graduated from UCSB, received her teaching credential from Cal State Dominguez Hills, I don't know where this happened, and she received a Master's Degree in Curriculum and Instruction from Wichita State University. So, I think she had a little traveling in there. She's been married to her husband, James. So, James, where are you? Come on up, James. She's been married to her husband, James, for 25 years, and they are raising three amazing young men, one at Long Beach State, one at La Salle High School, and one at Weaver. Would you three please come on up, too? So, one of the things that's so special about Ruth is that she was so surprised and humbled by this recognition. And she really said to me, so I got this quote, "La Salle Meadows has been my family. It is filled with the people I admire and value most in the world. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Ruth Friedman Finch on this prestigious honor."
So, Ruth, on behalf of the Board of Education, it is an absolute honor for me to present this to you. We are so blessed here in La Salle. We have wonderful professional educators, and this just highlights one of the very special people that work here. So, it says, "Teacher of the Year, the Board and Administration congratulate Ruth Friedman Finch, 2019 Teacher of the Year, La Salle Meadows Unified School District." And I have the great privilege of working alongside Ruth every day, and it is just a dream to walk into her classroom. She embodies the notion that rigor and joy of learning are not mutually exclusive because she guides students through such a path of discovery and inquiry that they don't even know they're learning. They just love it. I hear them arguing over academics and curriculum every day when they're on their way to lunch. And it's just so impressive what she does in the classroom. It's magic. She's also passionate and personally cares about each student. The work she's done with a student who has difficulties at home this year is amazing and inspiring. She's a true leader to all the teachers on our campus. People just look up to her. She's a go-to person for anything. She will do anything for you, and we just adore working with her. And one of my favorite highlights, each week is Flag Ceremony, because every Friday at Flag Ceremony, Ruth and her class sing our school song with such great joy and passion that it's amazing. She'll do it right now. But it just is characteristic of the pride she has in our school and in our district, and it's heartwarming to watch that every week. We moved locations of Flag Ceremony a couple of weeks ago, and Ruth is in a different location. And I'm like, "Where's Ruth? I got to watch her sing. It's got to happen." And then, I found her, and she was singing with glee, as always. And Ruth, on behalf of the Weaver staff, we just love you. You mean so much to us. We thank you for all you do for our students, and congratulations on this honor.
I'm going to try to hold this together. I don't know if I'll succeed. Thinking of Carrie Underwood's song, Cry Pretty. I don't cry pretty at all. So, Tina, I don't ever want to see that picture you just took, girl. Ever. Before I introduce my family, I really have to thank Dr. Crop, President, the Board, and my family. The support they've given me all these years, I can't even express. But my husband, he's there for me. He drives me to him from work. He knows I work nonstop, and they put up with it. My boys, they come and they help me at the beginning of the year. They prep my materials. They help me grade things. They're incredible as well. And I have to thank so many people out here because so many of you have had an impact on my teaching, but also on helping my children through that. And when I look up here and I think, "This is me," I know I couldn't be here with somebody like Terri Malpass. To be at the beginning of CGI was incredible, to know that you taught my children. So, to be honored by the people that I hold at the highest esteem, really, it works. Thank you.
We've had two surprises. We've had one person crying. That's okay.
Forgot.
And so, now, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. And, but wait, there's more. Thank you.
Thank you, President Barki, members of the Board. It really is my honor. This is such a highlight of the year for me to be standing here tonight and to be able to recognize 22 amazing exemplary educators that have spent five years with us, really on a journey together. We say we have a five-year PD plan, but I really think it's five years of induction to La Salle. It's five years of friendship building. It's five years of honing a craft, loving kids, and having a lot of time to talk about the art and the science of teaching, which is what we really value here in La Salle. And so, we've been going through a recent history social science adoption, and so, I've spent a lot of time looking through a lot of textbooks recently. And I came upon a quote by Aristotle, and he says, "We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence, then, is not an act, but a habit." And I think it couldn't be more true than when you engage in something purposefully, and it becomes a habit of mind, you can become excellent at something. And so, before I recognize these 22 educators, I need to recognize the John Budins of the team, our trainers and our coaches, that have dedicated five years of time to each one of these individuals, helping them hone their craft, helping them explore new ideas, become innovative partner. And so, I'd like to welcome up, to congratulate alongside me, Evan Grandin, Marcia Fries, Marlis Davidson, Lisa Wright, Terri Malpass, and Jill Cruz. These ladies are rock stars. So I have been fortunate for the last three years to partner and collaborate with these women, and have really been blessed to take over the work that Dr. Johnson started when he started a five-year PD cohort last year, which isn't always brand-new teachers to the practice. It also is teachers who are new to Los Al. And so it really is about learning the Los Al way. And so through really their guidance and their mentorship, we're able to help teachers be what they want to become. And I think that looks a little different for everyone, depending on where they are when they enter the classroom. And I think every year, a great teacher looks at their class and gets to know their students and thinks, "What do I need to be this school year, right? What is it that's the magic piece of the puzzle this year?" And so this team, along with our amazing teachers at the school site, who also mentor and guide everyday new teachers to our school sites, as well as our principals, really have made these next 22 individuals far surpass anything that we could have thought of five years ago. And so I'd like to start with our elementary teachers, and I'd like to welcome up Amanda Brent Thomas. You can come back to the front. Karen Moore. From our secondary schools, Mr. Matt Bone. So I think as you look at these 22 fine educators in front of us, you'll notice that these are leaders in our school district. These are pioneers and innovators. These are teachers who come to work every day and love on their students and really make Los Al a place that you're not only proud to work, but thankful to send your children to school every day.
Okay, we're gonna take about a 10-minute recess, so stick around a little bit so we can take some pictures, and then we'll regroup in about 10 minutes. So we will reconvene now, and we move into public and community staff participation. So I've got 13 cards. There's a board policy that we allow up to 30 minutes, so that'll go over, but it won't go that far over, so we'll allow everybody to speak, but be mindful of the three-minute rule for public comment. Also, I want to remind everybody that as a result of the Brown Act, we can certainly listen and understand, but we can't respond to comments. We're not allowed to have a conversation, at least in this forum. So I apologize for that. I know that was always frustrating for me, being on the other side of the microphone, but that is the rule, and let's get started. So first is Lisa McClellan.
So I'd first like to say good evening, esteemed school board members, executive cabinet members, and district officials, and everyone who's here, educators. I first would like to just acknowledge and honor the extraordinary teaching and educational leadership of Ruth Friedman-Finch. I know she's, I think she's gone already, but we want to recognize the dedication, the hard work, the passion for teaching that she inspires, not only in her students, but also in her colleagues across the district. And we thank Ruth for the extraordinary work she does. And secondly, I wanted to applaud the achievements of the first year, the first five-year cadre. Their perseverance, commitment, and quest for excellence marked them as leaders, and most assuredly as probably future award-winning teachers. Thank you to them. I'd thank them for leading the way, if there's any that are still here. And next, I'd like to address the hopes and dreams of all the educators here at Los Al. We strive, all of us, all of us, who work here for Los Al, to ensure that every student does get a world-class education. We know this happens, we know that happens when we work as a team. Our goals, the four As, that are the foundation of our district four As. The first A is academic integrity. The bottom line is, we as teachers need to be part of the decision-making process in decisions that affect what happens in the classroom, to ensure that the academic integrity of our programs remains consistently high. The second A is administrative integrity. We need to have confidence in our leadership. We need to be able to communicate clearly and honestly with our leaders, through our leadership teams and as individual educators, our professional opinions without fear of negative consequences. We need to know that our professional advice is a valued part of decision-making. We need to know that at all levels, open dialogue is the norm, that all voices will be heard, and that differences of opinion are tolerated and even welcomed. The third is accountable decision-making. We know the best decisions are those that are made inclusively, with input from stakeholders. We know that they need to be made with long-term goals in mind, that they need to be based on careful analysis, and they need to be communicated throughout the process. The last is actionable goals. Goals need to be realistic and well-thought-out. Plans need to be sustainable, staffing appropriate, timelines realistic. Ultimately, goals should be set with input from all the stakeholders working together in an effective structure. And we have a plan for that structure. We have a way forward to achieve these four As. It's the relationship compact. We look forward to working together with the Los Al stakeholders to make the relationship compact a reality. Thank you for your time, your service to Los Alamos Unified School District, to everyone. Thank you.
Okay, before I start, first off, I headed into work about an hour ago, so that's why I sound funny. But I sound better than I did, ask them. Dr. Barky, Board, Board of Education, Dr. Crop, Cabinet, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Nathan Howard. I am the President of the Los Alamos High School Faculty Forum. After much discussion and unanimous, and a unanimous vote, I'm here on behalf of the entire staff, both those that are here and those that are not. We as a staff do not take this opportunity and responsibility lightly. We also, while spearheading this action, we, the staff of the high school, echo many of the same sentiments and beliefs that exist at many of the other sites in the district, and we, along with the union, stand united to speak to you tonight. After many meetings and discussions, we have opened a dialogue with Dr. Crop in an effort to address our concerns, for which we thank you for that. And we'd like, and this process will continue on Thursday. The Board was emailed following a meeting with Dr. Crop, and that we have shared with her the following concerns: that trust and transparency are at all-time lows; the perception of top-down management is at an all-time high; a lack of policies and procedures that, there is a lack of policies and procedures that allow for input from all stakeholders before major decisions and evaluations are both made and implemented; administrative turnover is a major concern as it deteriorates institutional memory and site morale. And lastly, we feel that there is a major disconnect between the Board and the sites, and this disconnect has been illustrated at various times throughout the past year and through several offhanded ex parte discussions between Board members and the community. Thank you to the Board members who have accepted the invite from the union to take part in future unit meetings and discussions, and we look forward to that future. And we at the high school are seeking open, genuine, and honest discussions with all stakeholders to plan, implement, and evaluate the major decisions that affect all student engagement and learning. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Cordermarsh. I'm a teacher and a coach at Los Alamos High School. And I would venture to say that I am more Los Al than probably anybody in this room. I attended McGaw, McAuliffe, Oak, and Los Alamos High School. At Los Al, I've served as an assistant coach. I've served as a head coach, did my student teaching onsite, and now I'm a tenured teacher. And I don't feel that that gives me any more privilege to be up here speaking, but I do think that my words come from a unique perspective. To teach and coach at Los Alamos High School, my alma mater, is truly a privilege. It's not something that I take lightly or take for granted, but I am very much concerned with the direction that we are heading. Three years ago, our staff approached the district demanding change, and unfortunately, today I stand here knowing that our relationship with the district is at an all-time low. We do not trust that our opinion is being accurately represented to the Board, hence our presence here this evening. We don't trust that the decisions that are being made are made in the best interest of students and teachers. The most egregious of these decisions was to dismiss Dr. Brandon Martinez as our principal. This decision was personal. This was not professional. Dr. Martinez was told that he was not a good fit, and I asked, "Not a good fit for whom?" Because he was a great fit for us. He supported the staff wholeheartedly, and he provided a backbone when others wouldn't. He implemented long-term goals and actually wanted to see them through. He addressed social and political issues while cultivating meaningful relationships with students and staff. And so I asked once again, "Not a good fit for whom?" The district had five months to prepare a response, and instead, the decision was not to do anything. Eighty-five teachers, dressed in black, requested the audience of the district so that we could express our displeasure, our confusion, our sadness, and our concern. And this disconnect exists because we were not included in that decision-making process in any capacity. Our next principal will be the fifth principal in 11 years. Next year is a WASC year. It's a bond year. It's a board election year. And among those factors, the district decided still that it was a good idea to dismiss the leader of our campus. We have been fearful to speak out in the past for fear of retaliation. When we do speak out, we feel that we are ignored. District administrators employ a top-down decision-making, leaving both the district and the Board of Education without an accurate pulse of our campus. The district attempts to control every message, every decision, every person.
Go ahead.
And I don't believe that that is leadership. Leadership is not to control. Leadership is to empower. And too often, our site administrators are not empowered to make the decision that they are one, qualified, and two, hired to make. So I reach out to the Board, because I believe the Board of Education does have a responsibility to ensure that district decisions are made of substance, and that at the core of those decisions is what's in the best interest of students and teachers. The Board of Education, I believe, has a responsibility to hold accountable those who make those decisions that are unpopular and unjustified, decisions that are more concerned with how many likes are being, how many likes they receive on a Twitter account rather than how many likes there are in the classroom. Finally, I believe the Board has a responsibility to act on the truth of the many and not the opinion of the few. So thank you for your time.
Tough to follow, Eddie. Eddie, some of us have some pretty strong Los Al credentials as well. And Nathan does sound better than he did an hour ago. I'd like to thank everyone that came before me, and I'd like to thank you for having us tonight and hearing us. I also want to apologize that we haven't been here before. This isn't about a single incident. This is about 10 years of concerns that have built, and perhaps we haven't done our due diligence of speaking up and speaking out. But we're here now. This is the tip of the spear. We're galvanized. We have a clear idea of where we want to go forward and how we want to go forward, and we'd like a seat at the table. Earlier, we talked about tonight about the power of wisdom of experience. You're looking at nearly 1,000 years of teaching experience that's here tonight, and I'm proud to be part of it. We're at a critical impasse at our site. We're moving forward, and we're here because we want to be part of the solutions moving forward and continuing on beyond the now, but forever. Thank you for your time.
Kim Loggins.
My name is Kim Loggins, and I've been a teacher at Los Alamos High School since 1989. There are 21 math teachers at Los Alamos High School. Collectively, we have over 350 years of teaching experience, and of that, over 300 years at Los Alamos High School. This shows the level of expertise we have here in Los Alamos High School. Although my experience, through my experience at Los Alamos, many changes have been made in the math department. The most successful implementation of change comes from the stakeholders, the experts in the field, deciding that there is a need for change, and then being intimately involved in the change. There is a process for change to be successful. In recent years, this process has not involved the most important people: the mathematical experts, the experienced math teachers at Los Alamos High School. Whether it be choosing Apex, an online math course, as our attempt to help the lowest students who need remediation and credit recovery, to eliminating our two-year Algebra I course, Math A, B, C, D, introducing Math Lab, adding Principles of Geometry and Intermediate Algebra, removing said classes, and then within the same year adding them back again, removing Consumer Math, adding summer bridge courses, lots of intervention, removing, sorry, adding an Algebra A, B, and Summer C course, test retakes for every math test, Modeling Monday, Honors Geometry at the eighth grade level, I could go on, but you get the point. Whether or not these changes have had positive or negative results is not the point at this moment. What is the point is that many of these changes were reactionary and made in haste and without full input from the knowledgeable stakeholders. Additionally, some of these changes have had unforeseen consequences down the road that could have been avoided with appropriate conversations. I love my job. I love to teach. I love math. And I love Los Alamos. I want to help our students be successful. Let me and my colleagues be part of the conversation, part of the process, and part of the solution. We may not always agree, but the discussion is what is utmost important to make change. Let us, with all our many, many, many years of experience, be part of the conversation and be allowed to make Los Alamos great again.
I'm Janine Ball, and I teach at the high school. While it might look like, or you might want to take this evening as individuals coming to you to complain, in fact, it was just a tipping point when we found out that our principal wasn't the, being kept for next year. What we recognize is that the district office and the board is completely unaware of the significant concerns we have as a faculty. It's not individual problems. It's resonating throughout us, and it has been for a long time. And just, his release was so shocking to us, and so disturbing on so many levels, it's just the one thing that said, "Okay, now we're going to do something about it." We recognize that our admin team, for whatever reason, has become a revolving door for this school. I'm in my 20th year, and this new principal will be my ninth. That's absurd. It's instability at administrative level that's detrimental to our students, to our staff, and certainly to the district. We desire a strong leader who pursues substance, not public relations, and we have that, and we have that in Dr. Martinez. We were digging into problems that are pervasive in our society, that are the most challenging that I've ever seen in my teaching career, and we were tackling them. And we were tackling them as a staff, and it's really disturbing to throw all that away and say, "Oh, we get to start over again." And maybe we're going to start over again with somebody who prefers T-shirts with "I Love Los Alamos" on it. We recognize that our numbers do drive our determination of success. Our AP rates, of which I'm proud of my own, and I'm proud of my colleagues, and our standardized testing, that is a PR. We recognize that. But we also recognize that every one of those numbers represents a student who is near and dear to our heart. And some of those students aren't capable because of whatever challenges they have in their life, whether it's learning disabilities, or whether it's home life, or whether they just haven't got to that place yet where they are figuring out what their success is. We recognize that we want to support them in every single step. And that isn't always done when they don't have foundational classes. It's not always done when they are limited by constraints, when we put on them that they have to meet aged through G requirements, or some other false standard that they may not be able to achieve. We're here as a unit tonight. We are here, every single member of our faculty is joined in this. So we ask you to please let us work with you so that you know where we are, we know where you are, and we can work together. We feel like our administrative staff has not been valued. We feel that they are great, that they can take the work that is so necessary and go forward with it, but they need your support. They can't be constrained. And we do support them. We thank you for listening to us. We hope that you embrace what we're saying tonight and take it as a positive message, because we want this district to be great as much as you do. Thank you.
Dr. Barkey, at the beginning of the meeting, you compared teachers to doctors. So I'd like to take this opportunity to explain the diagnosis of the high frustration and confusion of teachers at the high school. In enduring edicts like Apex, Closing Laurel, AP for All, A through G for All, without teacher input and without support to teachers, there's a great deal of frustration at the high school. In having to endure the dismissal of our principal, we're unsure of why that happened. So as a result, we're unsure of where we are and where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, for this opportunity. I want to speak as a biology teacher who teaches strictly biology right now to five different sections of freshmen. We have 800 freshmen come to LAHS pretty much every year. Roughly 100 of them, in years past, roughly 100 or so were afforded developmentally appropriate levels of biology. We used to call it life science. We now no longer have life science. It's been a bit of a struggle for certain. Those who took life science in the past were doing so with the expectation that they would take biology the following year. In spite of many site-level meetings with both the current and former administrations, our department has been unsuccessful at retaining any of these classes. We currently have zero. So we now have roughly 100 students who are, according to everything we can see, completely misplaced, and we do not have really the wherewithal to make their experience all that it should be. And so I come here in the hopes that I can be part of the solution. I look forward to our meeting on Thursday. We've already, I think, established a handful of criteria to maybe make things work a little bit better in the future. I also come at this from a parent of an eighth grader and a fifth grader, so I would really like to get this thing sorted soon, especially with the short summer that's coming. I know the challenges that I've seen in the faces of the 100-odd students that I get who I hear about and see on a daily basis who are completely misplaced, and I would love to be part of the solution, as I can echo the sentiments that have been shared tonight, that I love teaching at Los Alamos. I really do want to make it a great place. But I think we are letting down somewhere near 100 out of 800 kids who are come to teach, who come to learn biology. So I thank you for this opportunity. Thanks.
It's going to come down low enough for me. All right, I'll come up. All right, good evening, school board members and fellow stakeholders. I'm Lance Melanowski, and I've taught the last 21 years at Los Alamos High School, and I've been blessed to work with some of the most dedicated, committed, and empathetic people I've ever met. I'm here this evening to express concerns regarding the deterioration of the culture of excellence that has made Los Alamos Unified School District an exceptional place to work, attend school, and send your children for decades. Initially, I traced the roots of our excellence back to the pantheon of Los Alamos instructors who helped forge the district's exceptional reputation. I chose three in pen and homage to their commitment, dedication, and exceptional character and integrity. When done, while happy with my efforts, the final version was very personal and emotional. Obviously, at 53, I'm entering manopaws and becoming old and sentimental. For the record, while not proper for this forum, I shared my thoughts on the exceptionality of Dr. Cross, Lorraine Gayor, and James Van Gorder, all exceptionally dedicated, kind, humble educators who are pillars of this district's success. It's been distressing to sense a decline in the civility and professionalism of interactions between some administrators and subordinates, even other administrators at all levels. As a longtime employee and union representative, the last few years, I've noticed an uptick in anecdotes regarding undesirable interactions, including verbal disparagement, unofficial visits that create feelings of fear and intimidation, and even staff members reduced to tears. I've asked myself, "Are these interactions to be expected in the real world?" The answer is no. Today, education is confronted by more challenges than ever. We must increasingly shoulder the responsibility of teaching more students, good work habits, perseverance, compassion, tolerance, and empathy. If we don't model these behaviors with each other, walk the talk, and practice what we preach, we won't achieve the levels of success we've grown to expect from ourselves and those around us. I do not make the decision, I did not make the decision to bring up the emerging crisis in culture my peers and I see lightly. I'm not here to point fingers or assign blame. In all honesty, I think recently we've had addition by subtraction, and Dr. Martinez was doing a commendable job of rebuilding trust in a collaborative climate. The departure of a genuinely humble, empathetic, and compassionate leader will be viewed by my peers and I as a not insignificant loss. He will be missed. We should remember Los Alamos Unified School District is an institution that can atrophy if its storages are not vigilant and continue to adhere to the principles that created this exceptionality. The only DNA we have to impart those qualities to the next generations are our thoughts, words, and interactions with each other on a daily basis. It is imperative we exhibit mutual respect for differing points of view and allow for their expression without fear of retribution. Let's remember, no one in any position or at any level in our district should be made to feel belittled and berated. No one should feel fear, pressure, intimidation. My hope is, moving forward, we restore the ethos of collaborative decision-making, mutual respect, and genuine compassion and concern for our fellow humans that truly make Los Alamos Unified a special place. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, and Dr. Crop and executive cabinet members. I'll keep it short. In my time at this district, I have seen many administrators come and go through the high school, and I feel that it is part of my success as a teacher that I have their support. And I'm just concerned at the constant turnaround and the loss of Dr. Martinez in how we continue to move forward and feel successful and empowered as teachers to do what we do in the classroom. So I hope thought goes into future administration choices for the high school. Thank you.
You might be wondering, "Why am I here? I am not a teacher." But actually, I'm a teacher, and I think that, at my core, is what has driven my leadership decisions and my relationship with this fantastic staff. It was over three years ago during the interviewing process, I said at every turn, a core value of mine is that those closest to the work need to be a part of the decision-making. I said that through the interview process, and I've said that through every interaction I've had with my staff, and I truly believe that now. And it begs the question that why we have over 125 of the most professional, passionate, and proud-teaching staff, that they are not part of that? That's the question mark that I have. And so what I would implore the board to do, as you've heard from many here tonight, is to get out and ask questions. Compare the reality that's been portrayed to you and conveyed to you versus the one that is really happening. I am not here for myself because I'm long gone. The process to replace me is there, and that's insignificant. This school is 50 years old and will be 50 more years old, and this night may be forgotten. But what, what won't be forgotten are the hundreds of kids that pass through our school every single day. And I have no doubt that if I walked onto the campus tomorrow and said, "Staff, you have no more textbooks, you have no more technology, you have no more classrooms," they would not miss a beat. Yet, time in, again and again, we find them impacted by decisions in which they were not involved, and yet they're the ones that are closest to the work to have to carry that out. So in closing, what I would hope is that we take a step back. We do honor and respect the protocols of boards, and we honor the Board Act. But I think as publicly-elected officials, whose stakeholders include not only parents and students, but the staff, that we find those opportunities for dialogue to really get at the pulse of what's happening at the site. Because as many have mentioned, as our staff buys into a vision and a step moving forward, they're only set back three more years. And I really feel that we got to that point, and I think they need to be continued to given that opportunity. And the last thing I would say in closing is that, for me, my litmus test is pretty easy. It's not that I want to be remembered at Los Alamos as someone that did X, Y, and Z because that's the work of the teachers. We're there to really get out of their way. It's not to have people recall that night that I came up and spoke at a board meeting. It's much simpler than that. It's my three sons. And I know that if they were to ask me, "Hey, Dad, when you had an opportunity to stand up and express what you felt was right, or to save yourself for a future job," this is a very easy decision to make for me. So I thank you for your time and consideration, and please know that those that are speaking here tonight are just representatives of the many at the site that need to be given that opportunity to be part of the decision-making. And again, those closest to the work need to be part of the decision-making. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I was not planning on speaking this evening, and I didn't know that Dr. Martinez was going to be here speaking, nor that I would be following him. So I'm here basically with my Los Alamos credentials. I started teaching here in 1990. My husband is involved here. My children are involved here. I, I think you hear our frustration this evening, and I want to echo what Dr. Martinez said, because I do feel a need to stand up for what is right. And I'm not real vocal at the school. I do my job. I love what I do. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I am in charge of WASC next year, and I'm a little nervous about it, truly. I was also in charge of it 20 years ago, and the morale was outstanding. Our teachers' enthusiasm was outstanding. And in my 28 years at Los Alamos, I feel like this is the worst morale that I have witnessed or seen. I know we can rise up again, because it's such an honor to have these people as can rise up again because it's such an honor to have these people as colleagues, to have you as a supportive board. And I think, and I know, you are all intelligent people who sense our frustration and will listen to what we have to say. Thank you.
We have two more. Leslie Weber.
Good evening, all of you, and thank you so much for your time. I am a teacher at the high school, also a coach at the high school. I've been there for about nine years now. Just to reiterate what I think most of my colleagues have said, we come out of concern, and we come out of a passion, and we come out of sort of a breaking point. I've been watching with my students most of the day today a speech called "The Perils of Indifference." And that comes to mind. The situation, I don't think, is quite as severe, but it's, we're definitely at a tipping point. Several years ago, we were told that Laurel High School, our continuation high school, would be dissolved as a means of increasing academic opportunities and access for all of our students. Around the same time, the district also determined the goals of AP classes for all students and making every high school student A through G compliant, which on paper sounds wonderful. To those not in the classroom on a daily basis, these shifts in philosophy seem clever. To members of the community, these goals appear admirable. To the faculty in the high school, we're seeing some disastrous outcomes. Those of us who have committed to being in the classroom on a daily basis, we see these decisions as a radical disconnection between the decision-makers and those of us asked to carry out the decisions and those being impacted by the decisions. There are consequences that have gone largely ignored or unknown by our decision-makers. Not all of our students matriculating from the middle school or from ninth to 10th grade and so on are prepared for our college-level prep classes. They lack either the academic or emotional maturity, or in some cases, both, to be successful and handle four rigorous classes plus electives and everything else that we ask of our students. When we took our concerns to administration, we were told that foundational classes are not in line with district goals, nor are they in line with national trends. Summer school is available for those students who fail. And a side note, the completion rate of summer school last summer, just for English, was barely 50%. We've also been told that intervention money is available for students if we would like to offer after-school or weekend opportunities for those kids. I can tell you that my kids who are struggling are not the kids who are going to stick around after school, and they're sure as heck not the kids who are going to come on a Saturday morning at 8:00 if I don't have anything to offer them other than donuts and hot chocolate. And even then, they're not coming. We have 39th graders who failed three or more classes in their first semester. That means that their next three summers are spoken for in terms of summer school, and that's not something that we should be doing to our kids. I don't think that's, I don't think any of you want your kids in that situation. I don't want my son in that situation. Another consequence is that students feel tremendous pressure to take AP classes when they struggle through these classes. The result is increased stress and lower self-esteem. We've all been asked to attend more SST meetings in recent years. Another consequence, teachers, especially those who have temporary or probationary status, feel pressure to inflate grades. Those of us who have not felt comfortable inflating grades have been called into offices and asked why we have so many Ds and Fs. Teachers across content areas have admitted to watering down their college prep curriculum in order to meet struggling students' needs and reduce the number of failing students. Some of our administrators have acknowledged that that watering down happens, and when we ask what to do, their shoulders are shrugged. Students' and parents' perceptions are that college prep classes are the lower and slower classes. Students' motivation and willingness to work is reduced. There's been intense shift in focus to AP and A through G results and a lack of variety of classes for our variety of students. Simply, we're trying to get all of our kids to fit into a mold that's been created for them, and it's not working. We still very much have students who would benefit greatly from a shift in emphasis, students who would thrive if they were given more opportunities. If our goal is truly to ignite all possibilities or unlimited possibilities in all of our students, we need to make sure that we're providing them with all of the appropriate resources and the appropriate opportunities for them to do so. We look forward to your support, and thank you for your time.
And finally, Jessica Reigert.
Thank you for listening to all of us. I'm a proud teacher at Los Alamedos High School, but unlike many of the people, like, I don't have the credentials of Eddie, but I actually worked outside of Los Alamedos for several years. I worked at a charter school. I worked at a public school. I worked at South Central LA, and I worked in Palos Verdes. I can say without hesitation that Los Alamedos is the best place to work. But despite that, I can also say that I've seen cracks that have been growing to the detriment of our schools, cracks that will turn into catastrophes that I've seen at those other schools. There has been a growing feeling from staff and those who don't challenge, I'm sorry, there has been a growing feeling from staff that those who don't challenge or stand up to the top-down management are pushed out or punished. On the flip side, those who follow without question or fall on the sword are promoted and praised. Factually or perceived, all across the district, specifically at the high school, we have seen admin that are promoted or let go based on those criterias. The danger in this is it creates resentment, distrust, and questions about what we're all doing here and what we are promoting. If the admin that asks questions on teachers' behalf, those who question and examine ideas critically and implement only after input and discussion are pushed out, we, as a staff, are wondering, what is the district office and the school board care or have interest with the professionals that they have hired in the first place? In addition, those that are good soldiers, once they leave or change positions, it is clear that they were creating a buffer between staff, the admin, district office, and school board and/or encouraging the top-down management. And the fallout still occurs because of problems that they swept away, the issues that they tried to minimize or ignore always come back. At the high school, we have seen this over and over. This concern is most evident in the push by the district for the last several years to run our school as a business. In the start-of-the-year meetings, staff professional development, and new hire interviews, we are told that the school is a business and our job is to get to yes, which, in broad strokes, this sounds okay. After all, what teacher would say no to a question or help a student get extra help and so on? But in detailed application, this is being used as leverage against teachers and staff. But schools, specifically ours, isn't a business. It is a community. Businesses are not democratic, which means you don't want to hear from the community, the teachers, the admin, or any of the stakeholders. By saying that the school should be run like a business, you are automatically taking out the best part of our district, which are our values, our family, and our community. All of this brings me back to my earlier point. I worked for schools that have not made decisions with good faith, consideration, or thought about the implications. Our district is fortunate enough to rely heavily on the relationship compact to make sure that we don't have trust issues. So as individuals from the Los Al family, I am growing more and concerned with the cracks that are starting to grow because of this breach in trust, relationship, and lack of professional courtesy. These issues need to be made aware of and addressed with all the interested parties. This is not solely a school board issue, or an admin issue, or just a teacher issue. This is a trust issue, and only a true community can solve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. We greatly appreciate it. We're going to continue on with the rest of our board meeting. You're welcome to hang out and stay. If you want, if you guys are planning to leave for some of the consent agenda stuff and some of the more routine stuff, you're welcome to do so. I don't want to, I don't want to keep you around if you're not want to hang out for the rest of the meeting. So I'll give you a couple minutes, and then we'll continue on. But thank you for coming. I think this is, I think this is your section, right?
Thank you, President Barki. Tonight, I'm bringing forward "Black Ships Before Troy" by Rosemary Sutcliffe. We'd like to add it to the middle school supplemental material list. It has a great connection to Greek mythology, and we believe will parallel the preparation that students need as they enter freshman-level English at Los Almeos High School.
Great, thank you. This doesn't require any action tonight?
No.
Is that correct? And Meg is going to read the book and then report back?
So is Diana.
Okay.
So we'll have a group book before.
Good, reading club.
We'll have a book club.
All right, very good. Next is consent agenda, and I know we have a poll. So I'll move approval of consent items 10A through B and D through P.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. So consent item 10A through B includes revised consent item A and then also D through P. So can I have a second on that, please?
I'll still second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously 5-0. And then we have our polled items, and I'll move approval of consent item 10C.
I'll second.
Diana Hill?
I'd like to speak to it. Thank you very much. This approval is for an overnight extended field trip by Los Alamedos High School Advanced Drama students to Lincoln, Nebraska. And our teacher there, Stacy, the drama teacher, is extraordinary and has done really incredible work. And I spoke to her last year as they were getting ready to go do this. And as with all of our students, we want to give every student an opportunity, and some will excel, and some will want to make that their path in their career. And so we want to give them the opportunity to hit that next level. Some will take drama just because it's the most appropriate elective for them, or that they want to learn to see if they can be on stage or whatever the question, whatever they may want to do, and all of those levels that go along with it. But for our students that are looking to want to go to that next level, this specific festival allows students to get seen. And so if there's opportunities for them to go on to college or other programs, they get that opportunity to be seen. And I think it's tremendous that they are allowed those opportunities. There's a lot of places that don't do that, and I don't care if it's drama, or basketball, or choir, or robotics. We give our students those opportunities.
And esports now.
And esports, too, if you want to be a gamer, because I guess there's good money in that. I guess, I don't know. So I just wanted to, I wanted to just highlight that because I thought it was really extraordinary, and I did have a really nice opportunity to have a discussion with Stacy about it last year.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Onto action items. Action item A, and this is approval.
And it's a revision?
Yep.
Okay.
Approval of a revision of resolution number 2017-18-38 of the Board of Education of Los Alamedos Unified School District approving the guaranteed maximum price and lease-leaseback agreement for the Los Alamedos High School infrastructure replacement project. Dr. Nien.
Thank you very much. This item is to enter into a contract with West Coast Air to start negotiating the contract for the Los Al High School infrastructure program. So as we, you have been briefed for many months now, this is the contractor. We have selected at this point to enter into a contract.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second to this?
I'd second.
And this is a roll call. Any other comments or questions about this? It's a roll call.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boya?
Aye.
Dr. Barki?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
And Mrs. Gattulie?
Aye.
Action item B is approval of textbooks. Mrs. Reed?
Did you say it passed or not?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion, resolution passes unanimously 5-0. Approval of textbooks, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, President Barki. Tonight, we're bringing forward teacher-created materials, history/social science program for kindergarten through fifth grade. Upon evaluation of the program, the team of teachers and ed services partnered together, and we believe it's a rigorous program. It has richness and text complexity. It addresses a new history/social science framework instead of a traditional textbook through a series of leveled readers. It has a focus on primary sources and on essential questions, which we believe really aligns with Los Al's signature practices. So we bring that forward for approval after being on a preview for the last 30 days.
Okay. I move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously 5-0. The next approval of resolution, before we approve this, I want to make a motion to change Section 6 of this resolution from where it says clerk, to change the wording to secretary, because the administrative role of this resolution is going to be something that likely Dr. Crop will enact as opposed to the clerk of the board. So I'd like a...
I'll second.
Yep, second, thank you. Any discussion on that?
No.
So approval of the motion to change clerk to secretary, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
It's a roll call.
Is it a roll call for the, for the change?
For the change?
Oh, not for change, not for the change, right here.
So now the resolution. And I'm going to try to articulate what I understand this to be before we formally read at least part of this resolution. So back in 2008, prior to the approval and ultimate passage of our first bond for 126 million, we passed a resolution that's called an SFID, School Facilities Improvement District. And so it allowed us to remove leisure world from the bond consideration and create a district, basically, that was without leisure world for the purposes of moving forward with the bond. So now, as we consider an opportunity for another bond, we're required to go back to this original resolution and change it, augment it, and bring it up to speed to what we are currently wanting to do. And that is, the original bond amount was 126 million. Our new facility needs, after doing a facilities analysis, et cetera, comes in around 265 million. So the purpose of this resolution is basically to change and alter what we did back in 2008 so we can use it moving forward if the, if the board chooses to pass another bond. I get that right?
Thank you very much, Dr. Barki.
Yes.
Well, I don't know if anybody listened, but yeah.
I listened. So...
And I was listening, so, yeah. Very well.
So as printed on the agenda, and then I'll call Dr. Nien to further clarify or muddy the water, as it may be, approval of resolution 2017-18-37, amending the original resolution of intention of the Board of Education of the Los Alamedos Unified School District to establish the School Facilities Improvement District, SFID, number one of the Los Alamedos Unified School District, and to authorize certain other actions. Dr. Nien, any further clarification of that?
No, you did a great job, Dr. Barki. After the resolution that is, the amended resolution that is passed tonight, if it passes, we will be putting this in the newspaper for circulation for at least two weeks. And then, at the June 19th board meeting, you, you will be having a public hearing on this item, and then you'll close the public hearing, and then you approve at that time. There's an entire process that we must adhere to, so I want to make sure that this is a very open process, and just want to make sure that the board understand that portion.
Great, thank you. So I made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And any further discussion? Awesome. So this is a roll call.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boya?
Aye.
Dr. Barki?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
And Mrs. Gattulie?
Aye.
I would just like to say something, is that we did have a workshop on this and had the opportunity to really talk about this and talk through it and how we were going to do that earlier in our open session earlier today.
Excellent. Next, action item D, adoption of retirement resolution. Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Mr. President, and his team members of the board. This is...
This is always a bittersweet time of the year when we're saying goodbye to some fantastic and extraordinary employees, whether they be in the teaching or classified role. We are holding our retirement recognition on June 5th, right before our next board meeting, and so we want to get these resolutions passed so that we can hand them this, one of the many recognitions that they'll receive for their service and dedication to our students, to our community, and to their fellow colleagues.
We don't have to vote on each one separately.
Very good.
I did ask years ago if we voted no, if we could make people stay, and I was told no.
Remember slavery went out with the Fourteenth Amendment?
Exactly.
So do I have a second to adopt these retirement resolutions?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Roll call?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Dr. Barki?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
And Mrs. Gattulie?
Aye.
And this is approved unanimously five-zero. Next is approval of warrants. The warrants are the checkbook of the district for the bills that are paid in between board meetings. The warrants are sent out to each board member. We often ask questions to clarify what the checks were written for, and when our questions are adequately answered, we then approve the warrants. What happens if we don't approve them, by the way?
Dr. Yen gets very upset.
Well, most of the warrants been issued already at this point, so...
We have to go chase down and get, collect money back if we don't...
Yes, I guess I will be doing that.
I guess we better approve them then. So I move approval of...
Especially when they're like 37, you know, pages long. Yeah.
So by the way, the total warrants was just over 1.5 million for the, for this period. So I move approval of these warrants.
I'll second.
And any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of warrants passes unanimously five-zero. Next is acceptance of donations. And during this time, we have the donations scroll in front of us. These are all the monies that were donated by a variety of groups since the last board meeting. Well, like that one, Italian Ice for $100. So total donations, $136,800 in year-to-date, almost $600,000. So we're blessed to live in a very generous community and such an involved community. And thank you very much. So I move approval of the donations.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Acceptance of donations is approved unanimously five-zero. Classified personnel report, certificated personnel report. Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Mr. President and team members of the board. We recognize, excuse me, we recommend approval of the two reports as submitted. They just represent the personnel actions from the last board meeting.
Okay, I'll move approval of the classified and certificated personnel reports as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously five-zero. And next is approval of agreement stipulation to a student expulsion, and I will turn that over to our vice president, Diana Hill.
So I make a motion that we approve an agreement and stipulation to a student expulsion waiver of hearing and appeal rights. It is moved that the agreement and stipulation to a student expulsion waiver of hearing and appeal rights for student A be approved by the violation of the following education codes, 48900A1, 489004, 489007, and 48900B.
I'll second. Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously five-zero. And now on to communication. And we'll start down on the left. Karen Russell.
Yeah, since the last boarding, board meeting, I had the privilege of attending the Seal Beach Chamber meeting at Old Ranch, and they, they had some very interesting things that they did. One was, they asked for you to, if you had, to choose anyone in history or anybody that you know to, that you would like to meet, and what would you have them mentor you about? And so everybody got, they chose one person from each table. I chose John F. Kennedy, and they chose me at the table because I, I did choose him because I said he was a good speechmaker, and then somebody said, well, everybody wrote his speeches. I said, but no, he had the greatest quotes, you know, because everybody still remembers a lot of the quotes he made today. Then I was able to go to the Orange County School Boards Association along with Meg, and I, I, we had an interesting speaker who actually, it was a company that works with various schools in the LA Unified School District, and had some very successful outcomes with some of the schools that they worked with and improved them tremendously. It was very impressive. And then I was able to go to the Oak Choir presentation at Magos School on Friday night. Oh my gosh, it was so good. Those kids are fabulous. And Mr. Mizuki has done this fabulous job with the kids at, at Oak Middle School, so congratulations to all of them and to the parents that support them and put, take them to and from practices and everything. And that's about all for now.
Mr. Boyer?
I'm just going to highlight yesterday morning's practice, which is a lot more fun. When you, four of you in the front there agree than tonight's main event. But it was just, it's always a pleasure to go there, and I really want to give a shout out to our PTSA and our HSA awards. They do a great job. Meg was there and Sherry, and we got to honor one of our own, Chris Flasic. We tried to surprise you, but his wife was out there and he went to the bathroom at the wrong time.
Yeah.
Ran into his wife. We couldn't, we're like, oh no, there he goes, stop.
Yeah.
But yeah, we tried to pull it off with a surprise, but it just, it was awesome to see the number of people that are, that are recognized for all they do. And I realize we live in a really special place and a special community. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, Dr. Barki.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Gattulie?
Okay, stop, okay. Well, I'm not going to mention the dinner that Karen already did because there's no reason for that, but I did want to give another shout out to Mr. Flasic and to Mrs. Allen for being recognized by the Council of PTA. It is an honor, and I, you guys are great recipients and congratulations. And it was a fun breakfast. Dan and I had a great time discussing life, and I found out that he went to school with my son. Talk about, I still haven't seen him, so I'll have to ask him if he can remember you from ECON. Okay. I've had an ROP meeting, and that's when we had our retirement reception already. ROP is a consortium of five school districts, and two of the largest school districts get out in, you know, like by the 20th of May. So we have people who retire sooner than others, so we have that kind of early. But ROP's doing well, and we're gearing up for next year. I did, I was able to attend the Los Alamos City Council meeting last night where they recognized Sherry for superintendent of Orange County, so I was really happy I was able to be there. I missed a lot of stuff this past weekend because I was in Sacramento. I'm on the board of the California School Boards Association, and we had a board meeting, and then we had another meeting called Delegate Assembly, which has about 225 school board members from across the coun, across the state come. And there are two big issues that they're really pushing, well, there's more than two, but the two that I'll speak to tonight is our full and fair funding initiative that will probably go on the ballot on, in 2020. We just want California, who now has a bigger gross national product as a state product, as a state economy than England, to just beat the average of the United States. As we all know, school financing is highly complicated, and to try to make it pretty simple is if we were today to go to average funding in the, in the United States, we would get $2,000 more per child. So it is a significant difference. Also, last time I was here, I talked about a safety, a safety bill that was in for active shooter training, and we were taking kind of like a neutral approach to it. And before I left and before the tragedy in Texas that took place, the author of the bill had contacted CSBA and said, how come you're not like supporting this and really loving it? And it was, again, it's one of those things where the bill idea is very good, but it had all these complicated mandates and how you have to do this and you have to do that. And a lot of the have-to things also included different agencies, police and sheriff and things like that, that as schools, we have no authority to walk up to a police department and say, you have to do this, it's in ed code. I mean, they don't have to do that. So he kind of went, oh, and he's listening to us, and so we, we are now a support of amend, and he, they are amending it, so we will eventually be supporting it. But we had a great breakout session with all the delegates there, talking about what safety needs they need on, in their school campuses. And every time I get in a situation like that, I'm very, very happy we're in Los Alamos. And then I just realized what a divergent state we really are. There's a woman there who was talking, she's a small district, she has less than 5,000 kids in her district. Every single one of her buildings are over 100 years old. She cannot, they cannot purchase the locks on the doors so you can lock them from the inside. They won't, they can't find any that will fit their 100-year-old doors. So for them to get good locks, they have to now get new doors. And it just, and I'm just, I have no answer for them. But I will say that many of the comments that I have made about what we have done in Los Alamos, people were taking notes. And they asked, how can you afford to do so many of these things? And I said, we prioritize it. It is important that we have safe schools for our students and our staff members. And they all kind of went, oh. And I said, you just, you have to communicate that out. So hopefully we'll be, and then we did say the big thing that would help every single school district in the state of California is if we could get funding for safety measures but have it being funded outside of Prop 98 so it's not impacting the classroom. And I wanted to thank Senator Janet Win for coming. I think that was very gracious of her to do it. I want to congratulate all of the five-year professional development teachers and their cadre tonight and their promotion. I appreciate the effort they put into it. And I want to thank everyone who came and spoke because we, it's good for us to get, to listen to people. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Hill?
Thank you very much, Dr. Barki. I've had the opportunity to do some really fun, wonderful things as the end of the year comes. We get the chance to celebrate, we get the chance to do awards, and so there's a lot of activity. And so I went to the Orange County Music and Arts Presentation along with Dr. Crop and so I believe Mr. Mallencamp, and there were a couple of others as well, and Annie. And we got a chance to honor two of our outstanding arts teachers. One is Janine Ball, who was at the high school and was presented with the 2018 Outstanding Art Educator Award. And then Terri, Sherry Tanaka. She got the presentation of a special award, and that was for visual arts in the middle school. And for those of you that don't know, she started a long time ago at McCullough Middle School, the hallway ups, in the upstairs building that is a shrine to the art, a shrine to the masters. And students get an opportunity to put a piece of work up there every year. I remember when we were doing work there before, how they protected that to make sure that it could go up because it was such an important part of that school. So it was a really, really lovely evening, and we got a little bit of a bonus because our wonderful football coach at the high school, his wife was also honored. So she was there, they were there with us that evening as well, and we really enjoyed it. I went to the Los Alamos Museum. They had a fundraiser, and I just really appreciate them. It's a small, little museum. They're only open a couple of hours, but if you ever get a chance to go in, it's, it's great for our community, and I do believe that we take our elementary school children there at some point in time during the year so they can learn about their specific community, have the chance to be at the LAHS PTSA meeting. I was with Dr. Barki. Were you there, Meg? No? PTA? No, the high school PTA meeting. No, it was just the two of us. So as well as many of, Dr. Crop was there. And I just wanted to say that Mrs. Reed just did a tremendous job in explaining exactly what her department does, and I saw everybody's eyes kind of roll in the back of their head. And even, one person even said, whoa, that's a lot. And it is, and thank you very much, and a great presentation. I also sit on the Special Education PTSA Committee, and I did have a chance, I've been traveling a lot for work, so I hadn't had the chance to make the meeting, but I did have a chance to make that meeting, and it was, it was an awesome meeting. And it's, these are our parents, we all, as parents, have struggles with our children, but they have added, and it's very nice for them to be able to have that connection with each other as well as with district staff that helps them with the things that they need. And I think just talking and sharing was the meeting I was at, and I appreciated it. This isn't related to school, but it is. So I got the opportunity to see Hamilton, and it was extraordinary. But the thing that really got me was that I was at a couple of different events with students, and they had on the Hamilton sweatshirts. And I just, to be able to talk to them about what they saw, and their eyes lit up when they talked about it, and for them to be able to connect with the arts and with history like that, and they're also very, very fortunate to have gotten to see it. But it was just amazing how proud they were because it was just so special to them. It really connected with them. And I also went to the Oak Choir, and that for me was special because I was a middle school choir kid that was one of those kids that had a solo, and I swear that's the reason I have no problem speaking in public, so. And then the, the STEAM Fair, oh my goodness gracious. From elementary school all the way through high school, you walk around and ask these students what their projects are about, and they go into depth into things I don't really even understand some of them. And they're just amazing, and they're so engaged and so excited. I got to hand out ribbons, which was really kind of fun for me. And then I just really appreciate LEAF. I appreciate the King and Queen Event, which actually allows that to happen, and just amazing, amazing morning. It was really awe-inspiring. And then just to piggyback on what Mrs. Gattulie was saying, we get with CSBA, we get a magazine, and there was infographic that came out, and it said, behind the numbers, the cold hard facts of California public school funding. And California's, California's schools are ranked 45th in the nation for funding. We are 41st per pupil funding, 45th per pupil for teacher ratio, and 48th in pupil-staff ratio. And what we do with the limited budgets that we have, I'm very proud of our district for what it does and what it accomplishes because I believe that our staffs are well taken care of. I believe that our students are given incredible amount of opportunity, and it's not an easy thing to do when you're underfunded, as Mrs. Gattulie said, almost $2,000 less a student than, than everybody else in the country. So that's me on my soapbox, and I'm done. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Awesome.
Dr. Barki.
Just for the other board members, we are going to go into closed session for a few minutes after this. Tina, first of all, thank you for helping to arrange the awesome surprise tonight. I love surprises.
Yay!
And we pulled it off, and it was so, it was so wonderful. It was, it was super cool, and the timing was superb. I've had the opportunity over the last week since the school shooting in Texas, I've gotten this real sense of urgency that we need to be quicker about what we do. You know, it's interesting, we are so far ahead of other Orange County public schools. There's a few, there's a few private schools that have done a remarkable job, but public schools, we're like light-years ahead. I talk to other people, and there's so much that they don't do that we've been doing for a long time. So I had the opportunity to talk to Mayor Edgar, Mayor Vera Papa, Sheriff Hutchins, UnderSheriff Barnes. And what I'm realizing more and more is that safety is not just about the school, it's about the community. And I want to really up our effort in working more broadly with our community partners, both our cities or all three of our cities, and our sheriff's department, police department, et cetera, in making sure this is a community effort, not just a school district effort. Because I think at the end of the day, that will further improve safety at the school. But I, I really have a sense that urgency is required in our, in our efforts. You know, the way I view it is, I try to put myself in the position of those parents in Texas or before that Florida, and just imagine what that would be like. And then as a school board member, if you were on the school board in Texas or Florida or wherever, then you got to sit around and wonder, did I do everything I could possibly do as quickly as I can with the resources that we have to make sure that we're ensuring, you can never ensure, but to make sure that we're keeping our kids as safe as is humanly possible. And I just want to make sure that we do those kind of things.
I'd also like to remind you that there are teachers who were caught in that thing as well as students.
Of course, of course, absolutely. I also attended the Los Al City Council meeting last night. And, you know, we spent some time in the Los Al Council when, when ours was under construction. And I forgot how small it is, there were a lot of people there. And besides waxing praise on Dr. Crop and Mayor Edgar and the council people, council persons were very kind. It was cool to see, we had a lot of students there, too, as part of their government assignment. They were sitting outside watching all the proceedings and so forth. And that was kind of, that, that was super cool as well. And Police Chief came up to me and chit-chatted a little bit about the timing of our SRO and days per week and so forth. And he's aware of the situation and wants to work with us to try to solve that issue as well. So I'm, I'm glad to hear, and every mayor or council person, or sheriff, or so forth, heightened concern as well. It was Pat Bates that sponsored the bill, by the way. And the Orange County Sheriff's Department is encouraging it, and they're creating a school safety program that's going to be a model for all the nation. And they'll be rolling that out for us to adopt if we choose, and for other districts to adopt as well. And, you know, it's interesting, for years, it may be fifty, a hundred years, we've had mandatory fire drills in the schools. But we now, I think, need to do that. We're already doing it, but not every district is. Safety lockdown drills, active shooter drills, and so forth. And that's really what that legislation is about, is changing the ed code to mandate it twice a year as we do fire drills and so forth. So I'm very pleased to know that CSBA is now supportive of that. I was over at the Orange County Board of Education meeting last week or two weeks ago, I can't remember, and they had a fiscal update. And then I attended our California Healthy Youth Act presentation to a group of parents as well. That's a hot-button item right now, especially at the County Board of Education. And many districts are trying to figure out how to be California compliant and at the same time, meet the desires of their local community. And then finally, the PTA meeting at the high school is always super cool to go to. I really enjoy doing that. You kind of get a pulse and a feel of the, of the parent community at the high school. And I think it's a well-run meeting, and you get a lot of good insight as to what's going on at the high school. So, as I recall, I don't gavel out, because we're going into closed me, closed session, right, Karen? Our local parliamentarian expert. We don't gavel out, because we're going into closed session, right? Right, okay. So we are adjourned into closed, and we'll go, we don't adjourn into closed. We just, we just go closed.